Good evening. This is the Franklin Township Public Library Board of Trustees meeting. It's Wednesday, February 28th, 2024. This meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting by Zoom and also in person. Now called meeting to order. And we will sit there on the pitchfork. Pledge allegiance to the flag, which is over in the corner there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, whose standing is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to call the role NBC. I'm not here. Iris Kizman. He is my Tiana Gresham. Nicholas Chapo, that's me, I'm here. Agnes Kulipania.
Yes.
Thank you. Amy Ursawala.
She was here and said she'd come in right back.
Her name's still on the chart.
Okay, okay. And Kevin McNeil is here.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer. And also, we are graced with our director, January Adams, our our technical guru, Bob Wardlaw, and Amanda Becker, who is who runs the Franklin Park. As well, we have a guest. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law. The schedule and notification for this meeting have been provided to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been posted in the library's vestibule and are available at the reference desk. If I call you, and Mayor, if I call you, then we'll okay, fine. And now I'd like to open the meeting to the first public portion. And we have tonight a a guest, Dr. Stanislaw Jarwick. Jar, yeah, Jar. Who will talk to us about the charging stations electric vehicles?
Thank you so much. It's my pleasure to be here just so that I can plan properly. How many minutes do I have?
What you need. I'm here. Forty minutes. Okay, good.
So if you can share the slides so that you can see it. Yes, that one. So again, thank you for inviting me. It's my pleasure to be here. I will take you through the charging station at the South Branch Library, as well as some other ideas that are surrounded with that. As Paul mentioned, I'm president of New Jersey Electric Vehicle Association. I'm also on environmental commission in this township. I'm employed by EZ Ride. So it's wanted to just mention that we try to be more collaborative. On the next slide is the picture of the library as seen from internet. It's a beautiful new building. And on the next slide, I just want to mention a few things about the New Jersey Electric Vehicle Association. I was founded in 1967. Hundred chapters and the New Jersey chapter is one of the most active. If you would like to have more information, you can scan the QR codes to sign up for our mailing list or visit our website. Next slide. As I mentioned, we are very active. We received the award in 2022 for being one of the most active chapters in the United States. We are partnering with many organizations. We organize electric vehicle shows. We communicate the benefits of electric vehicles, so electric vehicles to broad audiences. Didn't I mention that the mission of the Electric Vehicle Association is to accelerate the adoption of electric vehicles? Right? And the method is education and demonstration with electric vehicles. We also offer ride and drives, presentations such as this one. Transportation management agencies, we have collaboration with RideWise within Somerset, but also with others. And we also provide testimony of public hearings, support for policy. Next slide. So let's get into the specific theme today. So and again, thank you for sending me all the information from the engineers. So this is kind of the section of the site plan for the library. The gray section is the building by itself. On the right is the parking lot. And on the, here you can see the power line. There will be zoom up picture on one of the future slides. So I contacted engineers. I asked about how the electrical service will set up. So on the next slide, you can see that from the utility pole, the wire is undergrounded. It goes into the building. There are 400 amps service in at the meter. And at the panel is 300 amps. It's a 240 volt server.
Two separate panels of 150 amps each, but that's right.
On the picture is one panel, but
It's okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
It didn't work out that way because we couldn't get the 300 amps back, but we have two.
Okay, okay. That's a minor difference. Yeah, yeah. So and I checked with them on the next slide, how much is the actual load calculation and what is the available load? So out of the 300, 208 is taken up for the library by itself, for the building, for all the services that it needs. So there is about 15 kilowatt power capacity available according to engineers. And that is good for two Level 2 charging stations with decent capacity of about 7.7 kilowatts. Essentially, each of them would have 40 amp circuit. And by code, it can be loaded only with 80% of the 40 amps, so that would be 32. That's what I'm saying here, 32 amps times 240 volts, and that makes 7.7 kilowatts. This is pretty decent. On the next slide is a little bit zoom up of where is the actual wiring located? So somewhere around here would be the panel on the inner side. And here is the wire underground. And it ends up in this location. So mind you that the first parking spot is here. This is grassy area, right? And you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and I think this one is for disability. So it is located here. Now the next slide is a picture how it actually looks like today, right? So it's just the fact
Yeah, we have that pretty good.
So the way how it looks to me is that that wiring is friendly for only one vehicle, that it's just adjacent to the parking spot. I don't know what it takes for the engineers to move it a little bit. But on the next slide, I have specific suggestion, what would be ideal when you have capacity for two charging stations? It would look better actually if we go to the presentation mode. If you go to the slideshow, somewhere here is a button. Go to slideshow. Yeah, yeah. Right, so if you press the arrow one time, down or right. That one is good. It doesn't matter actually. So just once, yeah. So here would be preferred location for the charging station. And these two, so it will be dual, right? So these two spots would be labeled as the charging stations. I assume that you would be applying for grant from the EP, which is very generous. And also PSCNG will cover the cost for installation. So the EP will cover the hardware and the PSCNG would cover the cost of install. The good thing about this location is that while today, the the rule for using charging station is such that when you're done charging, you have to remove the vehicle so that others can use it, right? In the future, much better is to have adjacent spots available and one click. And so what you can actually do that when one vehicle is charged, as opposed to removing the vehicle, you take out the plug and you plug the vehicle that is next to you. Those ports are typically 18 feet long. You can purchase 25. And so this is more than enough to reach the next vehicle. So this is much, much better strategy. Again, I don't know what would be the specific solution from the feasibility viewpoint. If we install charging station here where the wire is coming out of the ground, you can charge only one vehicle. If we put it here, we can charge two vehicles. And in the future, you can have another one. But if you move it one spot further, not only you can charge two vehicles today, but in the future, when there are more people, you can actually lose two charging stations for four people. So this is a recommendation for this specific site. And I used that outline to draw some sort of general recommendation for future projects. If you go to the next slide, just yes. So I kind of moved it. Can we go to the presentation mode or?
How do I get to the next slide in presentation mode?
And then the upper arrow, please? Okay, wow.
Okay, up and down.
So just up, please. Yes. So in this scenario, here there are parking spots for disabled people, right? And we want to be prepared that some people who have disabilities, they also bring electric vehicle, right? So this is very good solution to that because you put one charging station here and label this spot, right? And whoever comes here, they can charge. But if someone who needs to park here, they arrive here, they can use it as well. Why not? Right? First come, first served. The same thing here. You can park here and use this charging station. Also, you can install two dual charging stations here. And now normally, if when people apply for grant and for four charges, or they put them next to each other, right? And they are in the trap that this will be always good for four people. But in this scenario, you first label these two to be dedicated, and here, these two. Right? Everyone else today, they drive guest cars, they will be parking everywhere in between. But as the proliferation of electric vehicles continue, now you can actually say, well, we can designate this spot, this spot, this spot, and this spot to be also for charging. And now when this guy is done, he doesn't have to leave. The next person will just take the cord, unplug, and plug this guy or that guy.
Stanislaw, we're probably getting way ahead of where we want to be, okay?
Yes.
We have in this near this building, two charge point stations. They're what I call moderate speed, kind of slow actually. My own observation here is that very seldom are they used. I come by quite often. Maybe one out of three times, I see a single car at a double station. Never have I seen two cars at the two stations, so. I'm thinking about this, what I the conclusion I came to is, well, there's not that much demand. A lot of people have an even slower charging station in their garage at home. And a lot of the people are depending on that overnight, and it's adequate. Where the ones we have here, I believe they're what it says.
Yes, it's about 640.
And that charge, what would that charge a Tesla, 300 volt Tesla?
So that's a good question. Charging stations in location like that are pretty much opportunity charging.
I'm sorry.
Opportunity charging.
Opportunity charging.
Right, yeah. You don't buy electric vehicle because you come here to charge it. It's rather vice versa. You come here and if you have opportunity and it's available, you plug it in, right? There is a bigger, better scenario for these charging stations, which is workplace charging. I had actually slides after that. So imagine that employees in the library here or in Southern Branch could be from disadvantaged communities. They could be from area where where they rent their home or multi-dwelling. They may have hard time to get their charging installed at home. And this is perfect location that workplaces such as library can actually offer charging for employees. And for employees, this is completely different story because when they come, they work here how many hours, right? And so two hours will give you about 13, this will give you 15 kilowatt hours. And each kilowatt hour is good for about four miles. So you can get easily 60 miles.
In two hours.
In two hours, okay. So think about how far the employee is commuting to come here. It's probably much less than that. So it is very helpful for employees who cannot have charging station at home, that they actually can plug in here.
Okay, let's talk more about then people who don't have a charging station at home. Let's jump from Level 2 to Level 3, right? A Level 3 charging station is expensive, takes a lot of power. But it would be great for people who want to charge a vehicle in 20 minutes or 30 minutes. And as far as I know, there are none in this area. I looked on the Google map, as a matter of fact, and it showed that Resta's Shell Station, which is right around the corner here, had one. Not true. They don't have one. Shell put that on the Google Maps, but Frank Resta says, no, we don't. He never had one. So supposing, rather than spend money for two additional slow chargers here, suppose we went for some grants and said, let's try to get one fast DC charger that will charge a Tesla in, let's say, 20 minutes, half an hour, something like that. And there's a perfect spot for it right nearby, as a matter of fact. Because the township owns the old Middle Bush School, which has huge three-phase Y connection power to it. And not much use for that power because the building is mostly empty. What would the cost of a fast DC charging installation be?
So I do have slide on that as well, if we show it. But first of all, I want to say that and I've been driving electric since 2005. My first electric vehicle even did not have fast charging port because I was not believing that it will take over. I thought that some politician will kill it, and they're still trying. So there are some very good reasons to go with Level 2. One of them is that Level 2 charging station is always cheaper to build. But it's also cheaper to run because you do not have spikes in energy. When you have spikes, the utility will charge you for that spike. And all of the energy will substantially more expensive. So right now, residents pay about 17 cents per kilowatt hour supply and delivery combined. Businesses, they pay depending less or more. But if you have fast charging station and you will have first customer, and I tell you, people will be trying it. But so I want to say that would be very expensive, okay? The other is the actual user case because no matter how fast is the fast charging station, you still have to go there, right? Most residents in Franklin are privileged. They have at least driveway. When you have a driveway, it's just much better case scenario that you plug it into your own home. It doesn't have to be super fast charging. As a matter of fact, many people, even with Teslas, still use Level 1 charging. Because they take completely out of consideration the service upgrade in their home. And they get about 40 to 60 miles a day every night. Mr. Mayor, I mean, how do you charge?
I go to Tesla charger.
Right, so you have
I said it at 35 instead of 44.
Right.
Just for the battery.
So and I'm charging at 16 amps. And I have two electric vehicles.
So 16 amps at 240. Single phase.
Single.
And it's AC charging.
It's AC charging, yeah. So it's much better because I don't have to make a stop elsewhere outside of my home. This is one of the biggest advantages of electric vehicles, not only that I can charge much cheaper at home, but I don't have to stop anywhere. I do stop only when I'm on a road trip. And then I need the power as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
And that's where the NEVI program, the bipartisan infrastructure that was passed in 2021 is financing lots of fast charging stations. And they need to be installed along major corridors. New Jersey Department of Transportation is handling this. They have a plan. First, they want to have them spaced out 50 miles apart, and then 25 to add more. So in our town, the only location would be you can go to next, next. The arrow doesn't work? Tap on the screen. Now it will work. So we can skip the work, Charge at Work program, which is fantastic. Franklin Library could get certified, just like lead certification. You can get also certification for implementing workplace charging. Next. Next. So here, this is from one of my networks. A screenshot of the NEVI funding applications. And he kind of blinded all other applicants but Tesla. And Tesla can do one fast charging station for about 19,000. Everyone else
19,000 for what?
One. One fast charging station. Everyone else is six digit. So well, 63,074,96, and then you go over 100. The median is 120,000 per stall.
Well, this is a shocker. This is a shocker.
And mind you that Tesla is that cheap because when they could build them, they have like 20%. 20 for 10, right? That's how you want to do it because when you are on a road trip and you are planning, right? You don't want to charge when your battery is 50% because the battery will charge the fastest when it's empty. So you want to actually stretch it, go as slow as possible. And when you arrive to the charging station, you want to make sure that it works. So when there are several people there, you want to make sure that there are many other stalls that you can always charge. So if you put something here, it will be just one charging station. How people will be actually certain that when they come here, that it will be available? Or it will be in use? Or it may be broken? That happens too. It's lots of electronics involved, right? So the 19,000 is for Tesla that is part of Supercharger Complex. Right? And that doesn't involve, that doesn't include the service upgrade. That's just the charging station and I think it must include the installation and commission. But still. And it works only for Teslas.
Well, I'm sorry, it works only for Tesla?
Of course.
Buy a very expensive converter.
The adapters are coming.
Okay, so
It is possible that that quotation is the Tesla Supercharger with Magic Dock. Magic Dock is built in adapter which allows people with CCS1 protocol to use that.
Yeah, so two years ago, about the time Paul that you were looking over our plans for building the Southern Branch, we concluded at that time that charging technology is under continuous development. And what I'm hearing tonight is that it's still under continuous development.
Wait a second, maybe I was not, I confused you. Like you think it would be, what is not good about that?
It seems that they're still evolving and, you know, the price will rise, the price and the technology will then change.
Cars will be able to use this charging.
No, no, no.
Or the
Actually so speaking of fast charging protocols, I should say there are three. Historically, the oldest is Channell, brought by Japanese. But that has been already announced on Phase Out two years ago. Then CCS1 combo, which is for everyone else except for Tesla, and then Tesla. And Tesla last year announced that they opened up. And then a few months later, Ford said, we are going to adapt Tesla. We will build all vehicles starting from 2025 with Tesla Ford. And starting at the beginning of this year, they will provide adapter for existing Ford owners so that they can actually plug it into the vehicle and use Superchargers, Tesla Superchargers. Because Tesla Superchargers, the nozzles are so much sleeker, they're much better. And they pretty much, they are called now North American Charging Standard. So today
Charging Square.
Right? It has also SAE designation J3400.
It's a slightly older motor engine.
Right, yeah. So today, regardless of whether you have CCS1 vehicle or Tesla vehicle, you are covered. Because if you don't have Tesla today, there are lots of charging stations that are compatible with your vehicle. And in the future, you will be able to use Tesla, which is really awesome.
Stanislaw, do you have any idea about what percentage of electric cars are made by Tesla, the ones that are in use now?
So Tesla is the major manufacturer and they started with uh, they started with, um, maybe eighty or ninety percent market share. Now it's a little bit less because, uh, other car makers are catching on. Um, but they are still over sixty percent now, maybe seventeen. And, uh, last year they slashed prices a big time, um, up to fourteen thousand for the vehicle.
And so, you know, uh, is there any information about how many people buy electric cars that don't have the, uh, capability to charge them at home? I mean, is that a?
No, it's a default. Every vehicle can be charged at home.
Every. But, but I'm saying, but so you were talking about, uh, you know, people coming to work that may have electric vehicles that don't, but I'm saying, I can't see. I don't know if that's a, if there's a, if there's a, a, a huge amount of people who are buying electric, uh, vehicles who don't have the capacity, whether if they live in, in apartment buildings.
And this is actually equity problem. Because me driving electric, I am saving lots of money on, on every mile that I travel. Why people who do not have the privilege of owning home? Why they cannot afford driving electric? So this is one of the things that we really try to address. And workplace charging is the thing. Plus, of course, there are lots of, uh, incentives to incentivize, to motivate, uh, property owners for rental apartments to install charging stations. But we really want to make sure that everyone has access to charging.
Right.
Because going to fast charging station on a weekly basis, that's a no-go. They will be always more expensive and you have to wait.
Right, so that's not, so, so what I'm saying is like, as of now, it's probably be a while before, you know, s- somebody who lives in an apartment building will say, I'm gonna go and buy, uh, an electric, uh, uh, vehicle until they see more, you know, these charging stations in places like the library and things like that.
So, so again, library is opportunity charging. Um, when you go to library, how much time do you spend in the library? Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes.
And that doesn't give you much charge. And, and you know, I tell you, a library is not a charging station. Like, it's, it's not a place where you would go charge. We, you can debate whether you want to allow local residents to come at night after hours and plug their vehicle. I would say go ahead and make it available. The thing is that everyone who is around South Branch, they have driveway.
Right.
Why would they do it? They would, they would have to bring another vehicle to and drive away. That's not practical, right? There are some developments in Kendall Park in that area. And, and they did apply actually for brand last year and now they have charging.
They have level two?
Yeah, level two. Yeah, yeah.
That's a point.
Yeah.
Okay. So in other words, having from what I'm hearing is you saying is that it's not so practical to have a fast charging uh, unit at the library.
No, 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 because it would completely break the budget. Here or there, uh, the one kilowatt hour could be in dollars per, you know, one kilowatt hour. It would be, you would not be able to recover the equal of clients.
Okay, I have a question for Mayor Frank. The township has within a couple hundred yards from here, uh, twelve uh, charge point stations. Did, uh, they get a grant for any of that? Who is, uh? Even out there. So Stanislav, I just said grants are available.
Yes.
For certain.
Yes, uh, and they have, New Jersey is very pro-electric vehicles and, uh, um, I'm, I'm just electrifying fleet at Easy Ride and, uh, Department of Environmental Protection, they have, uh, very broad, uh, coverage for, uh, many client, many stakeholders who would like to implement workplace charging, uh, I mean, charging, uh, to e- even DC fast charging. And utilities, they will pay, um, depending on the structure, residents, they pay fifteen hundred dollars to install charging station. They pay up to five thousand dollars for service upgrade.
For first service.
Service upgrade.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah.
It's just in the home.
The home, yeah.
It's pretty giant.
And every time the charging is public, you're in. They give you the money. Uh, I'm managing fleet and for fleet, it's private, so they're like, eh, I don't want to give you money. But the D P still gives us money because we are serving community. So.
What are the safety hazards, safety zones for these, these chargers? How safe are they? Compared when you think about fire and all those things, electrical fires?
So, uh, unlike gas, uh, stations, um, the electric charging stations do not store any fuel. And, uh, they are U R certified, Energy Star and all sorts of certifications. Uh, there are no problems in that effect. Uh, in this slide, uh, uh, somebody was asking, I think, uh, you submitted questions, uh. So this is kind of screenshot from one of the companies, uh, just representative A B B. Um, and there are fifty kilowatt charging, one hundred twenty, one hundred eighty, um, and they have, they need sleep base, they need, uh, uh, four hundred eighty volts. Um, uh, power factor zero point ninety-six. Um, thinks, uh, the next slide would show even faster, up to three hundred fifty kilowatt. Peak and three hundred twenty kilowatt continuous. These are really, really fast. Um, they are actually, uh, upping the voltage. Normal charging station has four hundred to five hundred volts. And, uh, some vehicles are compatible with actually doubling the voltage. Uh, it, the, the battery pack is actually kind of dual. So when you connect it in series, you can actually double the voltage and that.
Some bigger, smaller wires, same amount of energy.
Correct.
But smaller wires.
Like Hyundai, Kia and Genesis, they're all doing the platform and you can, um, charge up to eighty percent in, um, twelve minutes. It's like that. This is really.
So things are moving along and changing.
Yes, yeah. They also have the ability to preheat the battery, which is very important. Uh, so, you know, when you heard about, uh, those guys being stuck in, in, uh, in, uh, Chicago, uh, they didn't communicate to the vehicle that they want to use the supercharger. They pulled to the supercharger with cold battery and the battery refused the charge. The first thing that happens, the vehicle is warming up the battery, which may take half an hour or forty minutes or even more. And when that happens, then the vehicle starts fully charging. So, uh, but I'm kind of digressing here, but.
No, it's good. That's okay. We, yeah, well, uh, so you've given us a lot of information that we didn't.
We never had as cold condition in years, so.
As Chicago, but it gets cold.
Do I have anything else on the next slide? All the questions, yes, so next. So, so the only place where we can conceivably have fast charging station is Route twenty-seven and fifty. Couple of years ago, I was like, no, because exit thirteen at Target, they have Electrify America. But Electrify America, they have only three stalls. They are always occupied. Sometimes they are not fully functional. So this location would still earn lots of business and the good thing for the local businesses is whoever comes to charge, they always buy sandwich, refreshments or something. So here, if you click once, is the quick check. Uh, this is old, uh, old satellite image, but when, when, uh, the site was at Environmental Commission for review, we make comment, put at least two fast charging stations. Didn't happen.
Are you telling me that there is?
There is no, no. I'm just telling you, if you would like to have something in Franklin, this is the only spot, right? Click again. Here is Exxon. Exxon is unlikely, but they are, they have good location. And one more time, please, here, um, this is the plaza with, uh,
Superior.
Battle King. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That would be also two. Right?
Those are very busy intersections.
And busy is actually, well, from traffic, it's not terrible, right?
Yeah.
But, but you want to have close to the exit. That's very important, okay? And you want to have some services and they are services, right? I have no idea how much power is available in that area. The utility will have to probably deliver some extra. But, um, I would say this one would be probably most, more, most.
And you, you conceive of, say, ten look, ten, ten ports?
I, I, I was not, I don't go to gas stations. Um, I, I, I would have to see how many they can squeeze, but ultimately the engineer would have to make the call.
Yeah, but I mean, to, to be a practical.
To be a practical, you want to start with six.
Six, okay. And that means that all six might be operating at the same time.
Yes.
So the power input is.
Yes, it, it must be, uh, it must be better. Yeah, but they already know, they already know.
Thank you. That's, uh, that's very enlightening, uh, Stanislav and, uh, my initial reaction is we're not ready for that many stations at at, uh, Franklin Park, but, uh, you know, but in the future, you, you've set out a, uh, a roadmap that as to it, how it might evolve when electric car use gets about, what is it now, about five percent?
We are in upper single-digit adoption in New Jersey.
Upper single.
Nine percent?
Nine.
Between five and ten.
Between five and ten percent of all cars in New Jersey are electric.
Yeah.
And of those, maybe sixty to seventy percent are Tesla.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they have the ability to charge their vehicle at home in a home environment.
Right, right. And, and that's irrespective of brand.
Right.
And it's actually the best charging because plugging takes, uh, thirty seconds, unplugging also takes thirty seconds and that's, and the involvement. You know, you, you can do measurements and, and measure how much energy you are using and then try to compare it to gas, which I do, but it's optional. A utility will give you also, uh, uh, peak actually, uh, rate just for the car, right? You don't have to subscribe for time of use service for the entire house. But when you have it installed through the incentives and you charge it, uh, after hours, you, you pay like nine, nine cents per kilowatt hour. Yeah, this is part of the incentive. When, when you install a eligible charging station in your home, then they, they would. Would do myself, so that it costs you. Well, you might actually benefit from time of use. It depends. If you have, uh, a heat pump, if you have, uh, heat pump water heater, uh, and you can kind of shift the load to, uh, uh, off peak. And if you have solar, small solar on the, on the house, it actually produces peak most of the time, five to two. There's five business days of peak and two weekends and so on.
Lot going on here.
Do we have anything else?
How much does a driver pay to pull into one of these and pay and? Or to the car?
Uh, you mean at home or fast charger? And fast chargers. The fast charging stations, um, it varies, it varies. The rule of thumb is that the fast charging station will give you electricity at the higher rate such that it will be about the same cost as driving on gas.
Wait. And so they're charging much more than the eighteen cents per kilowatt hour?
They are.
And, and here we charge about eighteen cents. Okay, but, but we're, we're charging roughly the cost of the electric delivery from public service. We're not tripling it or quadrupling it. And what you're telling me is that, uh, the fast charging stations, uh, maybe triple or quadruple.
So, um, I, I don't use Tesla because I cannot. My vehicle is not Tesla. I've heard that Tesla is actually not too expensive, the supercharger. Um, everyone else is, uh, like forty cents, fifty cents per kilowatt hour. I have seen seventy. But it's, it's rather exceptional.
Seventy cents.
As opposed to when you're at home, it's.
It could be, it could be nine. I am on off.
And if we, and if we, uh, have this at the library, this, we would be charging, is that what you were saying?
Well, we probably, we probably still pay public service what we're paying now.
That's right. And we would, and how would that, we would charge the, the people to use it or that, that how it.
I would recommend, uh, always charge because when it's free, you can abuse.
Well, yes.
Plus you don't want to take away something.
So I would recommend charging less than, uh, seventeen, eighteen cents, maybe like, uh, throughout.
Duke, Duke Barnes had one where for two hours, it's a low rate. If you stay longer, then the rate jumps up.
I see a bunch of charging, uh, so those are not fast charging states. Well, it might be because it's not in Franklin, but I see a bunch of them off of, um, Route one, uh, where there's, uh, Panera Bread, right, Panera, um, are those fast charging?
Yeah.
Those are fast charging. But yeah, that's not.
Put checks on, on Route one?
On Route one, that's over, they have Panera BJ's Costco. It's, uh, you know. By the movie theater, first one, but on the other side, it's, it's on, it's on the side going north. Or coming north is where, with Costco, where, where, where they just built the, they're building all sorts of things there. They just put a shake shack.
Yeah.
I guess I know too much about it.
Apparently.
Everything is based on where the group Panera. BJ's. But anyway, I didn't, so there's a lot of them over there. I don't, I guess, you know, I don't see a lot. I'm not over there all that much. But I do see people, I do see people over there, but like you said, when you, when you I'm, I'm not thinking that that's not Franklin County when you said there wasn't any. But it's, it's close, but yeah, that's not Franklin. And that's on a major, you know, I guess a lot of people use, uh, Route one to, to go up and down, so.
Warehouses require so many charging stations as a percentage of how many parking spaces. It's one thing we look at all the time.
Okay.
Well, I thank you very much.
You're very welcome. If you have any other questions, uh, you know, my. I know that you, more than twenty minutes, I'm sorry. I'm glad that, uh, you guys have questions, uh.
Yeah, very informative. You almost got me taken about behind it.
We have, we have Drag Electric Earth Month coming up, the entire month of April. Lots of shows coming up, uh. We actually had first show, uh, in College of New Jersey on March sixteen. Saturday, there is a Trenton Computer Festival. And we will have, uh, ten, fifteen vehicles for test driving, all free.
And we're gonna do one in Canal.
And what is this? This is, um,
College of New Jersey?
New Jersey Electric Vehicle Association. JerseyEVA dot O R G.
Jersey.
Where is the one that Canal Walk?
Canal Walk is April seven, eight, nineteen.
Nineteen, yeah, I haven't seen emails, go back.
Um, Friday, but, uh, Canal Walk is closed.
Yes. Personal question, this, 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 like, uh, upkeep, uh, maintenance on a electric vehicle, it's, it's easier?
That's much less.
Less moving parts.
Less moving parts. But is it, is it, is it more, I mean, is it more expensive? I mean.
When should we? I want to make you laugh because that's what it is about.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, it's cheaper.
It's cheaper, it's cheaper than maintenance.
If anything, but the tires.
Tires, yeah.
They maybe wear out faster, because
Yeah.
we like to.
Yeah. I replaced mine, it's one, just replacing the twenty eight thousand.
Okay.
How often do you buy a new electric vehicle?
Hmm.
Like I'm, we're the type of people, buy our vehicle, pay for it, and we drive it.
Right.
As long as it'll go.
Yeah.
But is that?
Okay, so for your information, that vehicle that I purchased in two thousand twelve, it's still on the road.
Oh, okay.
And it's registered in my name. In defamation.
How high can you charge the battery? But I mean, have, have you lost battery?
I, I lost about twenty percent after twelve years. That's pretty. Hmm, and the technology has improved.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, that's, I guess, so, so if I asked a question.
My second electric vehicle, I lost it because I told. But it had eighty-five percent state of health. After seven. And that could be some, some for kind of playing a bad reputation that I'm miles. But today, oh my goodness, and Tesla basic model Model C has L T D battery, lithium iron phosphate, which can withstand many more cycles because, before it goes wrong.
And it charges to a hundred percent.
You did, they prefer they charge.
But right now, it's not easy to drive an electric vehicle for like ten hours across country or across.
Uh how often drive, but.
A couple times a year. Driving to the Midwest, so that wouldn't be an option.
I wanted to, to challenge that notion that it's not possible, and I took the entire family in December in our Chevy Ball to Orlando, we made it and back.
Yeah, but we're driving across Pennsylvania by eighty, so.
Yeah.
It's not the same, it's not the same.
They are charging stations, go to Plaxia dot com, and it is comprehensive list of all charging stations.
Pennsylvania.
Yes, I went to, I went to Hershey.
That's not easy.
Yeah.
Yes, but I just didn't have the need.
Right.
But if you challenge me, I'll find a destination, and I'll go there.
Well, I will say we're not.
I would, I would wonder if it would be worth it to you know, rent a car, if you, you know, if, if.
For day to day.
For day to day, if you would save that much money during the year, because I'm like you, I, I drive to Georgia, not towards you. Right.
And that's very good, uh good thing, because you need to try it, so when you have more vehicles,
Right.
get one.
Right.
And have the ability to both, both people in, in a family will try.
I, I love it. Now, what, what about, what's your feeling about the plug-in hybrids?
Uh you have two power trains in one vehicle.
Hmm.
You have to wait for them. They weigh more, you have to maintain both. The efficiency goes down, and you have less available room. Have you seen a Ford F one fifty Lightning?
That's a pickup truck.
It's a pickup truck.
Yeah.
You open the front hood, cargo. You, you can fill it up with stuff. If you have plug-in hybrid, you need to have the engine, you need the electric motor, you have the battery, you will can more expensive, you have to go.
But not a plug-in, I'm just a regular hybrid, and I saw this winter, I, my miles per gallon went down, because the battery is now ten years old.
Hmm.
Yeah, but it's doing, it's still, I'm getting forty miles per gallon. But uh.
Well, okay, Stanislav.
Can't stop, right? I'm killing your meeting, I'm sorry.
You so much, this was a very
You're very welcome.
Yep. Yeah, I'll take another time. The rest of the meeting is not gonna take.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Thank you.
Oh, my pleasure.
That was very interesting. Might have got us a.
Okay, where are we now? Public meetings, yeah, public comments. Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak at this point?
We, we're looking for another person, so.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe we'll look and see.
Go for it, and contact me soon.
No, I will.
Thank you so much.
Public portion of this.
Good night.
First public portion of the meeting.
Does you mean?
And we'll go on to the end. Thank you.
Thank you for seeing us.
Um discussion and acceptance of minutes for the January twenty fourth meeting. Are there any comments? Is there a motion?
Also moved.
Agnes has moved to ex- to accept, is that Ag- Agnes?
Yes, yes.
Is there a second?
I said.
Kevin has seconded. Any discussion of the minutes? Or of the motion? Those in favor signify by?
No.
Alright.
Uh okay, um. Amy, are you still with us?
I'm here.
No, Amy is, Amy is not.
Um we still have a quorum, yes, we do have a quorum, and it has passed unanimously. Any directors' reports?
Any of first?
Does anyone have any discussion of the financial report? Okay. About your uh operations report?
The uh, the ILS project is currently six weeks ahead of schedule. Um Valley Route project, uh some of the uh people that are involved in that were actually here today. Some are putting in new display doors for us, so I had a chance to talk to them. And uh it looks now like the beginning of the project is going to be the beginning of April, and the last through May. The Adult Services Department had forty-five adult programs that five hundred fifty-six people came to. Youth Services had thirty-three, that one thousand eighty-nine people each avoid. Uh the young adult librarian is kick, is going to kick off the annual teen poetry jam on March twenty-second. And teens can submit up to three original poems for a chance to win a twenty dollar Target gift card. And the winter reading challenge is over. We had fifty-nine adults, fifty-two teens, and a hundred and one children.
Okay.
Franklin Park has been doing very well, particularly with programs.
Yeah.
Yes. And uh they now have their own book club down there too.
So is it working on and working?
Oh, not to full capacity. Not where every spot is.
That's kind of heading back to the soul, at the soul of the.
The lectures are charged, let's see.
Okay.
Okay, now done.
Thank you, January. There is no president's report this month. Correspondence. Thank you, January, for sharing the articles with us on the journal.
It showed it was an interesting aspect about social connection, the libraries are.
And now the library is a healthcare center, okay? So let's apply for Medicare. Okay, yeah, that's, that was a good read, good read, thank you. Anyone have any questions about uh these two articles?
I just have a comment to say that uh our library is doing fantastic, very well, considering the fact that kids are now on either their iPads or their uh phones and et cetera, but the hearing that they are making use of the library, du- especially during the reading program, is really, really fantastic. Thank you very much, um January, for what, job well done.
I also, yes, I wanted to add that I've been doing uh school visits at the Franklin Park School that started in February. And um as of that director's report, I've had nine classes present, I just did two visits today, five on Friday, well, last Friday. I'm doing now, I have more this weekend.
When does it end?
I don't know, that in June. Um but it's been very exciting to see every child, or just about every child in that, in the town, because you're getting the kids whose parents don't bring them to the library, and that's really exciting, and uh you know, I ask every class, do they have a library card at the vent of the library? Most classes not, maybe half the kids raise their hands, not even. So I, I just found that really interesting, but I always mention how they can get a library card.
Good.
And I will say that after, I've had maybe three, four kids come back after school, after their visit, to get a card. And they were very excited about it.
Good.
It's been really dream work.
Good.
Yeah.
A lot of work.
It is a lot of work, but it's really, it's really fun to see the kids.
Do you predict that you'd ever be able to expand this to the Claremont School?
Well, that's, no, I could.
Okay, okay.
It would have to be a lot worse, it's only me, because let's go get it, so.
Yeah, but I mean it.
It would have to be more planning, to coordinate it, you know.
So transportation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The reason we can make it work so easily is Franklin Park, well, it's on their end, but because the kids walk over.
Walk over, yeah.
Five minutes, I had two classes walk over today in the rain, but it, we are at most five minutes long.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Is there any old business? Seeing none, we move on to new business, and I see one item on the agenda, it's our audit for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. I'm sure every one of us has read this three or three times and memorized most of the numbers, so does anyone have any comments on that?
I know all ten of them.
That's too much reading.
It seems to me that uh
Part of the reason it's gotten so much thicker is the grant. Uh one of the stipulations of the grant was they had to do a more comprehensive audit, so there it is.
Okay.
It'll be it. I don't believe there's anything we need to do with this, other than acknowledge that we have it. I don't really need a copy at my.
Well, I only need one copy here.
Okay, I'll, I'll throw out the last one.
Okay.
I still have the last, okay. Any other new business? Anyone with new business, no? Okay. Uh public comment, second part for public comment, would any member of the public like to speak now? Seeing none, close this, and confirm that our next meeting is March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Mayor Kramer, and Kevin has seconded, any discussion of adjournment? Seeing none, please, any, all those in favor of the uh uh motion signify by, okay?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion to adjourn is unanimously passed.
Okay.
Thank you all.